Please.
Hammond City Council has now ordered, please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please maintain your compliment.
Dear God, we're meeting today to conduct matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, factual thought and speech. Deliver your wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Court Gollwitz will call.
Markovich.
Here.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vanez.
Here.
Calwinski. Yulaki.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Henosa.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Next on the agenda, a presentation regarding the successes of the advancement placement, training and incentive programs.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
This past school year, Councilman Spatelli and I visited Gavitt High School on two different Saturdays to observe the Advanced Placement Training and Incentive Program, otherwise known as APTIP. We were very impressed by the engagement of the students from both Hammond High and Gavitt. When Ms. Hayden approached me, I thought since school is starting in just two days, the timing was perfect for her to tell us about the successes of the program at both Gavitt and Hammond High. So Ms. Hayden and Ms. Morris? Ms. Morris it is, I guess.
Thank you, Ms. Vanez. Mr. Spatelli, again, thank you for all of your support last year. Many of you made contributions to the TIPIN program at Gavitt, and I want to report to you today that we really appreciate that. We used your contributions when we did some of our mock exams, which was running the students through an actual three-hour seating for their exam so they knew what to expect. We used your contributions to buy lunch because they missed their lunch hours when they were doing their mocks. We feel very, very positive about the results, not just because many of our students earned college credit while they were at Gavitt and Hammond High, but even those students who did not pass their exams and get qualifying scores experienced college-level work. They went all year, they got college training, they got college education, they are prepared to go to college, even if they did not get a qualifying score. We thank you for your support. And Karen is the program director for TIPIN. She is here this evening from Notre Dame, drove over to help share our successes. So Karen?
Wonderful. Thank you, Kathy. And thank you, City Council, for allowing me to speak today. I just want to give it a little context for the AP TIPIN program. We are funded with an investing and innovation grant from the U.S. Department of Education. We are funded to implement the National Math and Science Initiative strategies for advanced placement math, science and English courses. So we are a very narrow AP program, but still want our students to have AP success because we do want them to be educated and able to go out past high school and into the workplace and able to graduate from two-year institutions, four institutions, trade schools, or even the military with success. And that's what advanced placement does. All the evidence and the research says that. Indiana and Colorado are two of six states involved in this program, and there are hundreds of schools across the United States doing it. Gavitt and Hammond High School in the state of Indiana are two of only 30 high schools who have this program in place, and we're very proud to have them on board because the work of the teachers, which is high-quality professional development, they attend 60 hours of extra training outside of school to help them teach their students advanced placement courses speaks to the quality and dedication of the educators in the school city of Hammond. The extra supports of the program, like the mock exams which you helped fund for the program, plus Saturday programs which Councilman Vanez actually attended, really give the students extra opportunities to learn content they may not have gotten in school, which is part of the program. But this is a training and incentive program, so we award both students and teachers for earning what we call qualifying scores, which is the scores on the AP exam that provide them with the advanced placement credit to help them move on at the next level. And this is so exciting because in the first year of the program, and we have two goals, makes my life very easy when I only have to deal with two things. The first one is to increase the number of kids taking advanced placement math, science, English courses. That's the one that dedicated principals, guidance counselors and teachers. They keep the kids in the classes. They see who's appropriately trained for them and get them there and keep them there. But two is to increase those qualifying scores. In the first year, Hammond and Gavitt High School increased their enrollments in AP math, science, English courses by 65%. That's amazing. That's amazing. Went from about 210 to over 340 kids in just those classes. So they did a wonderful job in their first goal. The second goal was harder. It takes a lot of effort, a lot of time, a lot of sweat, and sometimes some tears. These students went from only last year about 20 scores to over 43 scores, 43 qualifying scores, and we're very, very proud of their work. We have a few of them here with us today. These scores and the incentives, which we will present also to the school board, represented $9,600 earned by students and teachers this year at Gavitt and Hammond High Schools. So wonderful. We're so proud of them. And we look forward to year two with these two high schools and adding Clark and Morton and getting more students in the school city of Hammond involved in the program and hopefully preparing them for the workforce in a way that'll make them active, productive citizens to your community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. I would like to add one thing that directly impacts all of you in this room. As you know, obviously, you fund the College Bound program, and all of these qualifying scores mean that these students receive college credit. And I don't mean to single out anybody, but Zach Schreiber, would you please stand? Zach just completed his, um... Yeah, his academic... Boot camp. Thank you, Zach, down at Purdue Lafayette. He is entering Purdue Lafayette with 16 college credits. We have... That is saving you guys college-bound money. We have one student who is not here this evening who has passed eight AP courses, which means he is entering college next week with 24 college credits. This is the kind of success that we are dealing with, and like I said, this directly impacts you because of the College Brown Scholarship Program. So thank you again for your support, and we're looking forward to working with you again next year.
Thank you.
Ms. Hayden, Ms. Morris, and the other educators who are here today, thank you for your dedication to our students. And to the students who are here today, congratulations. That is just terrific that you are working towards your future. It will make your life's journey a lot easier. So thank you. Thank you very much. We're very proud of all of you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. All you folks are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Okay. Okay, moving on to reading the minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
motion to accept the minutes from July 28, 2014.
Second.
There's motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson to accept the minutes for the last meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Both.
Minutes passed. Bless you. Approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims July 23 through August 6, 2014, for council meeting in August 11, 2014. Beginning with claims dated 7/29/14 and ending with claims dated 8/6/14, claim number 3873 through claim number 4191 for a total of $3,096,842.84. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Calwinski. Is there any discussion?
Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
We have a couple additions. Claim number 4192, $100 from Community Center Development Corporation, donation from Councilman Gollwitz for $100. Claim number 4193, Hammond Firefighters Association, Gulf Island, $775 donation from Councilman Gollwitz, I'm sorry, City Clerk. And claim number 4194, Battle 119th Street, between the Clark and White, they have a barbecue, $100 donation from Councilman Calwinski. I so move.
There's motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs to amend the claims. Any discussion on amendment of the claims? Court Gollwitz will call on the amendment of the claims.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Yulaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Claims passed. Amended 9-0. Now the claims is written. Court Gollwitz will call.
Markovich, yes. Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Yulaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Claims as written. Passes 9-0. Moving on to public hearing. There is none. No more communications. Any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Just like to send a letter to redevelopment as it relates to the 900 block of Kenwood and Grove. The weeds are still growing up there. I'm reporting that they have someone cut them down around the fire hydrant and that it's kind of really not only look bad, but it's just the taste of it. New paving house that was developed there on Ames Street with more than just the taste of it.
There's a motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henosa to send a letter in regards to 900 block of Kenwood and the beans, have the weeds cut to the Henosa Street. Alls in favor?
Both.
Any other communications? Any other communications? Is there anyone saying none? Communications is not loaded. Moving on to committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Yulaki.
I move for final passage to 14-24.
It is 14-24. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Your report is not loaded. Moving on, uh, orders. Urgent final passage. Court Gollwitz.
Orders number 14-24 sponsored by Councilman Yulaki and Councilman Higgs. And ordinance amending ordinance 4497, amending ordinance 4923, amended ordinance 7630, also known as section 72.
I think that ordinance 14-24 is a good one.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spatelli. For final passage. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Does anybody have a bill of fees work?
I do. I have a copy.
We got those at the last meeting.
Can you give me something to say?
Yes, I have. I have that here. Councilman Markovich. Oui.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Guess why we're waiting? I can go over that board just somewhat details of additional revenue generated from the increase of the toll increase throughout the city. And certainly, we all know, we need additional revenue, so... That's why I support this particular ordinance.
Okay, any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I would like to amend in page two, be it further ordained by the Hamilton Council that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from January 1st of 2015 and after its passage by the Hamilton Council. The reason for this is the toll contracts are going to be rebid, and this effective date of January 1st will give us time to accomplish that.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. President, point of order.
Okay, you have amended, go ahead and second, all right?
Second. Now you go into discussion.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
This says for police orders. So does that mean when people on the outside are told to other cars for other reasons, are they applying same fees to the driver?
Turn to the court.
Police order toes are, in the simplest terms, police order toes. Let's say my car is in my driveway that won't start, and I call a tow truck. That range is between me and a tow truck driver. However, let's say somebody has parked their car in a snowdrift, left it there to the point where it's crossed it over, and they put a slightly orange sticker on there. Those are police order toes. So it's not just anytime a tow occurs at Hammond, it's those that police dispatch calls for a tow.
Because somebody's told the company, "Yeah, it's 50 hours for a tow."
Correct. That would be a private, right?
They're not going to go ahead and start injecting the fees up on everybody.
Well, then it would be a private business decision, whatever the market would bear.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Let's go with the fees and how it relates to the increases. Regular tow is back there, tow was initially $125. It will be $180. Service it off, or additionally, previously, or $75, it will be $100. Inside storage per day, it was $40, it will be $50. Outside storage per day is $30, will become $40. Oil dry, which I'm kind of not familiar with, I guess it has an oil spill or something. Maybe it's in the car.
Mr. President.
It's $35, it will be $40. Racking was $60, now will be $75. Use of go jack equipment was $60, will be $70. Cleaning was $30, now $40. Total of the city five police vehicles with no charge.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I would like to crack the councilman that is whinching, not wrecking. If they have to win.
I hope they don't wreck it. Yeah, the oil dries, the two vehicles collide in the street, there's always chemicals and liquid substances that go into the street, and we want to make sure we get them off of oil dries before they get into our sewer system.
Any other discussion? Court Gollwitz will call on amended version 14-24.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Yulaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. And amended version passes 14-24, 9-0. Now 14-24 is written. Court Gollwitz will call.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Yulaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. 14-24 passes 9-0.
Mr. Opinker, that concludes ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Court Gollwitz. Barred on introduction of ordinances. Moving on to resolutions. 14R-22.
Item 8, resolution of 14R-22 sponsored by Councilman Yulaki. A declaratory resolution of the Hammond City Council designating that a certain area of the city of Hammond, Indiana, be established as an economic revitalization area to which deductions from assessed value may be requested by an applicant to the county council of the city of Hammond pursuant to Indian Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Mr. President.
Councilman Yulaki.
I move for final passage of 14R-22.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Yulaki, second by Councilman Spatelli for final passage of resolution 14R-22. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Can you give me some clarity on exactly this is going to be allocated?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Is Jessica Chaffrey still here?
Yeah, could you step up your mic, please, Jessica?
Thank you. This is the first step for a company to apply for a tax evasion. Monster still will be applying for personal property tax evasion. And the first step for our property to be eligible, or personal property to be eligible, is the area that they are located in has to be designated in economic revitalization area. So this is the first step. Those don't have to go before you for another ordinance and a resolution, as well as a statement of benefits, but this is a preliminary step.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Do you have a general idea of how many jobs this company is planning on?
We have representatives from Monster still have a lead here.
Certainly, because I'm interested in economic development, so if you have some kind of general idea, we'd really appreciate it.
Would you like the current employment count?
I think if they are planning on hiring chemists residents in the future, hiring more residents. Just a general idea, Mr. President.
We currently employ approximately 40 people, which will be relocating Hammond in the next six to eight weeks, and we plan on hiring, uh, seven more in the next three years.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Africa, what's the total amount of the investment?
The total investment or the investment of the new equipment?
Not total investment. I know that you get tax breaks on the new equipment, my grave.
Correct.
Okay, so I need to know what's the total investment.
Approximately $9 million.
How much?
Nine million.
And what's the start salaries for these jobs?
Average salary is about $40,000 a year, plus benefits.
Any other discussion? Court Gollwitz will call on 14R-22.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Yulaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. 14R-22 passes 9-0.
Mr. Opinker, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
All right, moving to non-vengeish business.
Intend to consider ordinance 14-25 sponsored by Councilman Higgs. The petitioner is Vermillion Enterprises LLC. And ordinance amending ordinance number 8514, also known as the Hammond zoning ordinance, for purposes of adopting a planned unit development district ordinance for the Douglas Point Plan Unit Development, establishing the provision for parcel E of the Douglas Point Plan Unit Development as a supplement to the zoning ordinance.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of 14-25. I so move.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spatelli. Final passage of 14-25. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Only thing I have to say in regards to this particular project, I think it's going to be a great investment in our city. Not only that, I would hope that in the near future, there are other projects of such nature that take place in the third district of the United States.
Any other discussion? Court Gollwitz will call on 14-25.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Yulaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. 14-25 passes 9-0. Any other non-vengeish business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
For those who are interested in doing good in your neighborhood and finding out what's going on in our city, I'd like to read a list of the community and crime watch meetings that are coming up. Columbia Crime Watch will meet on Monday, August 18. Eastham, oh, I'm sorry, and that is at Columbia School, 6:30 PM. Eastham Pullman Crime Watch, Tuesday, August 19. That's at the Ophelia Stevens Center at 6:30. Hessfield Crime Watch will meet Thursday, August 21, at the Jean Shepherd Center at 7:00 PM. Lafayette Neighborhood Watch will meet at Lafayette School on Wednesday, August 20, 6:30 PM. The South Hammond Crime Watch will meet Thursday, August 21, at the Hammond Housing Authority Building at 7:00 PM. And the Whitney Roberts Dale Crime Watch will meet at Kennedy College on Thursday, August 14, 6:30 PM. For those who, as I said, are interested in knowing what's going on in your neighborhood, this is an excellent opportunity for all of you to come and ask questions of the community policing officer who patrols your particular neighborhood. You can ask them discreetly about any occurrences that are happening in your neighborhood or any problem areas in your neighborhood. So I encourage everyone to come out, and that is how change happens. One gesture, one person, one moment at a time. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to send a letter to several departments within the city. 230 William Street, there's a tree that needs to be picked up. 5948 Park Place, there's a cut and clean that needs to be taking place there where the weeds and grass are growing high. 10 Way Up, there also needs to be a cut and clean, so I would hope the inspectors will go out and inspect. 36 Carroll Street needs to be boarded up. 34 Carroll Street needs to be demoed, and the alley needs to be cleaned adjacent to that. And 47 Mason, the front of the house is a lot of bags and weeds in front of there as well. And the 100 Block of Highland, there's a large pothole that needs to be repaired. I so move, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henosa to send a letter to all these different departments. Sounds like code enforcement, uh... Street Department.
Board of Works.
Board of Works. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Certainly want to send condolences to the Franks family, as well as to the Smith family, two families who I have known most of entirely, my entire life, actually.
family, two families who I have known most of entirely in my entire life, actually. And Pastor Franks had a church down the street from where I was born and raised at, on Morris and the corner there. So certainly want to send condolences to Mother Franks and to the Franks family and their loss of their child as well as their sister, and, of course, to the Smith family and the loss of Ms. Dolores Smith, who also passed away.
Any other unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Markovich. One lady I'd like to talk about who has never been able to come to a council meeting while I was on the council was my mother. And tomorrow she would have, was her birthday, and she would have been one hundred years old, but she passed away thirty-one years ago, so I just want to make that for her.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to make an announcement as well. Again, the Back to School Giveaway will be August twenty-third at MLK Park from twelve to two. Kids are welcome throughout the city to come out and get school supplies so that they can have a very, very exciting school year. Thirteenth Annual Back to School Giveaway. Thanks be unto God.
Any other unfinished business? Unfinished business is now closed. There is no public expression, nobody had signed up for it. So motion to adjourn.